Okay, folks, it is Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six P. M. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call, Candace.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Kathy Cop is excused. Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
All right, we'll move right into consideration of the consent agenda. The following items be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you want something removed for separate discussion. We have the council minutes from July twenty fifth. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for July. Appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, I am appointing Cindy Tang and Eileen McCartney to the Safe Routes Committee. And in your packet, there were licenses, one-year and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol.
I actually had a couple of questions more just to get up to speed.
Okay.
And one was on page thirteen. It was for TC Networks, and the bill for the month was twenty-five thousand, seven hundred. Is that a monthly bill that we pay for security cameras?
Oh, that was installation, I believe.
Okay. Was that the installation at probably the installation at the inclusive playground?
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yep.
And the other question I had had to do with the general investments. It's on page twenty-three. And it showed that for the year to date, our investments were down over about two point eight million dollars, so down about thirty-seven percent. And I didn't know if that was because of expenditures where we were liquidating investments and using them for other projects, or if it was a typo, because I know a lot of them are bonds and the bond market is up around two percent. So it didn't seem like there's any way we could be down thirty-seven percent, two point eight million year-to-date. And.
So.
But no.
That would probably be a question for Nicola, is that right, Clint? And Nicola is on vacation today.
That's who I would like to reference in a public meeting versus me guessing.
Right. Yeah, if she were here, she would bring up a spreadsheet and tell you. So it could be one of two things, but we'll get the question to her and get it answered. It could be that we had less money in investment because we had less to invest. So that could be if it's compared to last year.
It was like eight million at the beginning of the year, and now it's down considerably. And I didn't know if it's just because. Or.
So we'll, we'll, we'll ask, we'll add, we'll get the answer from Nicola. Okay?
Yep, that was it.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve all items listed on our consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn. Candace will vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next up on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I've had nobody register with a green sheet to speak, but we do have a young scout in the audience tonight who's working on a merit badge and working on his Eagle Scout, so we welcome him. And a new resident of Platteville who was obviously looking for something to do tonight and didn't want pizza. And so he came here. So anyway, we welcome them. I would comment, and if anybody else here has comments, I did attend the pancake breakfast at the, at the airport. It was very good, very well done. And showed off our airport and our fire department was there. EMS was there, and they brought in a helicopter, a med vac helicopter that's generally stationed in Mineral Point. So that was very nice, plus lots and lots of air. So it was good. Anything from anyone else? Okay.
I was in a discussion with some people from Jenna Tower who were concerned about the park, and I had to come sit back there, and so he said that they're moving as quickly and expeditiously as they could, so.
Right, and I believe the people, they also came and appeared before our Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee meeting, maybe the last one, and talked about some of the items in Jenner Park that are in in need of repair. So, good. All right, let's move on in the pack, in our meeting then to reports. We have reports from boards, commissions, and committees, police and fire commission. Kathy's not here. I didn't see anything, and we have the Housing Authority Board. Lynn, anything to report?
None.
Okay, other reports in the packet are the Water and Sewer Financial Report for July, the Airport Financial Report for July, and Department Progress Reports. And I do know we have a question or two in Department Progress Reports. So, Ken? You said you had something here you wanted to talk about in Department Progress Reports.
Well, the first one is Code Enforcement citations, two thousand and twenty-three. So that's, that's on the one page there, so the people are listed, places are listed, I should say. And I'm especially looking at the next pages, and the next page, the fine print. It's has to do with property address, number of bedrooms, and accumulation of litter, rubbish, garbage. You just go down the list, pretty much the same, litter, rubbish, garbage. And just keep on going, and then see what else is there, bushes, trees. Now, then it says on the correction date, unsure. So these dates, here's like the first one, three, twenty, twenty-three. So when I go down this whole list, are these all corrected? Or the, some of them unsure? And also, my next question is, are these things that are turned in on a complaint basis, or is the code enforcement officer going around and citing these? Or the Rick Rinnaker, the building inspector, how do these get on the list?
They get on the list several different ways, actually. We do have a code enforcement officer that does go around the city looking for violations. But we also get comments from the public. The inspector will notice some and pass them on to her. I will notice some and pass them on to her. So they come about in a variety of ways. Yeah, as far as the ones, if they have not been, well, this is kind of a, it's not an up-to-date list. So I would say most of those, if they're a short-term violation, have been corrected by now, or they were on the previous page about a citation, one of the two. But some of the longer-term projects that require additional work may have not been completed yet.
But going around then, the code enforcement officer or somebody else is actually identifying these places.
Correct.
It's not a neighbor turning them in.
Well, sometimes it is a neighbor.
Sometimes, but would you say a high percentage of these are by the city being, turning them in?
Yes.
Okay, then the next one is noxious weeds. You got a whole big, long list of noxious weeds. Are those turned in by the city or by people, or what?
That would be the same situation, the combination. Sometimes, sometimes we get calls or emails, and then sometimes she just sees them when she's.
Sometimes she is actually listing them.
Correct.
But Joe, your color coding is, when you say correction date, unsure, but, and then it's kind of in light blue or light green or whatever, but there's a date there. So what does that mean? Why does it say unsure, but then there's a date?
Um.
Like on noxious weeds, the first one is six hundred North Hickory Street. Inspection date was five-ten, but then it's in that unsure color, but it says five-eighteen.
Yeah, I don't know. The code enforcement officer put this together. I don't know for sure what her, I mean, that's kind of her internal tracking system, so I'm not sure what the different colors mean.
It just means she's not sure how many bedrooms there are.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that unsure category is. But that would be my guess.
It appears up in the other situations, too.
Yeah.
Litter, rubbish, unsure.
Yeah, I'm assuming the unsure refers to the number of bedrooms, if she's not sure.
I guess I had a question.
And she makes the distinction for the number of bedrooms, whether it's considered a rooming house or just a regular rental, because some of the garbage collection rules are a little different.
I said.
Then, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just had a question with this. Is there anything that we can do to make this easier? Change ordinances, make something that makes this process a little more smoother, quicker? Or is it sitting in your eyes right now as a good process and worse?
This is one of those processes where there is no good way to do it, depending on who you ask, because sometimes we're too restrictive and we enforce the code too close, and other times we're not doing enough. So we can never seem to make everybody happy, and I don't think that's possible. So we just try to find the middle ground where we take care of all the problems as best we can and, you know, keep it consistent. In my mind, that's the biggest issue is trying to be consistent. If you address a problem at one property, you have to treat other properties that are in a similar state the same way. And that's a difficult thing to do when you've got some neighbors turning in their neighbors and other people that don't seem to be as worried about it.
Good. Sounds good.
I have a question on the last, excuse me, the last page. It's, it gives, it starts with seven-ten Broadway Street, and noxious weeds or tall grass greater than eight inches. Then over on the right, it says status. Corrected, pending. Then in red, it says overdue. And then, and then the status is pending. So could you explain what is meant by pending, corrected, pending, overdue?
So at the time she had put this spreadsheet together, all of those were pending, meaning they were still in the works in progress. So then if they get corrected, she would change it to corrected. If they're overdue, then she would change it to overdue for that property. So that's kind of her title. But at the point she printed this out, they were all pending.
Pending.
Right.
Because the pending's in black, dark black, and overdue's in red. I'm just trying to figure out what's what.
Looks like she's been busy.
Yes. And this was just kind of a snapshot in time, so obviously, no. It's a moving target for all these maintenance items.
Okay, other questions on the Department Progress Reports? Any other questions? If not, then we'll move on to our action items tonight. The first of which is ordinance twenty-three oh five, amending speed limits adjacent to city parks. Howard?
Yes, thank you. This was brought back because after discussion with our attorney, we needed to do a formatting change for our ordinance based on, on what was going on. There were some typos the last time, so it was withdrawn and put back on the, on the docket again. So what this does is it repeals the two thousand and two ordinance establishing a fifteen mile-per-hour speed limit between Memorial Day and Labor Day on Pitt Street and Sylvia. And, but it does establish the same speed limit when children are present, not only on Pitt and Sylvia Street, but on Second and Fourth Streets when they're adjacent to Smith Park, Legion Park, or the pool. So in your ordinance, we have basically a redline version of what, what was changed from last time, and then there's a clean copy that shows what, what the clean copy should read. So that's what we have.
Okay, questions or comments?
Just a general, a general question. When children are present, are you setting an age for that, or are you saying anything about what children are?
The state statute, I'd have to look that up again, but I believe it talks about up to ninth grade. I think it's fourteen, fourteen years old. It's, it's in the state statute. I don't have it right here in front of me, but I believe it's, it's something along those lines, like
fifteen, fourteen or fifteen.
Fourteen or fifteen years old and/or like ninth grade or something along those lines. I remember seeing it, I just can't recall exactly how it says. Oftentimes, the age of the red. The, the age of the children will factor into the officer's discretion as to whether or not to cite. Smaller children, I think there's more, less leniency. Older children, there's perhaps more leniency, but that'd be more an issue for the police department. But that, we can cite any time there, there is somebody that, I believe it was fourteen or ninth grade, something like that. Less than that, they can be cited because children are deemed present if they're over the speed limit.
Thank you.
I did have one question, and again, I'm sorry I'm not quite up to speed on all of this, but I drove it last night, and a change definitely needs to be made. I, from the beginning of Smith Park to the end of Legion Park, took me almost three minutes. I mean, it's really, I was trying to drive fifteen, and that's hard to do. And, but I was wondering, do they ever just make it a, just a blanket decrease in the speed limit, say to twenty? Or do most communities do like a fifteen and a twenty-five? Because there's a big difference between fifteen and twenty-five. And I used a calculator I found, and it said that same distance at fifteen would take two minutes and forty-eight. At twenty would take two minutes and six, and twenty-five is a minute forty-one. So the twenty is a lot closer, but it's a lot easier to stop when you're going twenty than when you're going twenty-five. Or do people generally think of the speed limit's twenty, most people will be driving twenty-five?
Yeah.
There's all of those things that are in the, that are in consideration for that. I mean, twenty-five miles per hour is the statutory speed limit within city limits unless signed otherwise. And then fifteen miles per hour is what is in the state statutes regarding school zones, and now in areas next to parks. So for us to go away from what's in the Wisconsin statute, I guess it's legal, but it wouldn't be the norm.
Okay.
And.
No, that sounds good. It just wouldn't really make sense to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so Howard, I don't understand why Fifth Avenue was removed. Fifth Avenue is the west side of Smith Park, right?
Yes.
So it was reduced. I, it was removed to amend speed limits on Fifth Avenue is crossed out. Then it's just Camp Street, Fourth Street, Sylvia Street, Second Street, and Pitt Street. So why did we remove Fifth Avenue when it's one of the four roads that are the boundaries of Smith Park?
Park Place is also on that road.
Park Place?
I believe.
Go straight on.
The, the, the residential community, the elderly community, it's what Casey was talking about.
Yep.
Well, I looked at that, and I, I said that, I determined that Fifth Avenue is generally not used as a through street for, for most people. You know, most people that are cutting east-west through the city will either take Camp Street, or they'll take Ridge Avenue. Ridge Avenue was left out because it's well north of the, of the inclusive playground. We really only have the wood shelter and the one basketball court that's up there. So we kind of took, I felt that that would be good to leave out. Fifth Avenue, I left out basically because it just goes between Camp and Ridge. It doesn't really connect much of anything.
So it'd be hard to get to twenty-five miles an hour.
Well, that's, that's part of it, too. I just didn't feel that there was the amount of traffic there that there was on Camp or Sylvia or Pitt Street.
And, and I was probably only thinking about that because the handicap parking lot for the playground is on Fifth Avenue. So there's how many, I don't know, six or seven or eight dedicated handicap parking spots? So if you were going to have, you know, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, and I realize it's a, it's a short block. And, and it probably would be difficult to get up to twenty-five miles an hour on that block, although people could probably do it.
My, my recommendation is to just go with what we have for now. And if the police or local people determine that there is a problem with speeding on Fifth Avenue, we can always add it.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion.
A motion here. I move to approve ordinance twenty-three dash XX and ordinance amending speed limits adjacent to parks.
And it's twenty-three oh five. Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Lynn to adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash oh five, amending chapter thirty-eight concerning speed limits adjacent to city parks. We'll vote, Candace.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the second item on our action agenda tonight is the two thousand and twenty-four strategic plan. Clint?
As we talked about at the last meeting, we're kind of coming out of quite a few different changes in personnel, myself included, and several faces here at our city council here tonight that were not with us with our last round of strategic planning. So we have some items yet to finish on our previous plan from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three. It's the recommendation of the city manager tonight that we in fact treat two thousand and twenty-four as a pause year to kind of reassess the plans from that twenty-one through twenty-three plan to put some focus into what we want our future strategic plans to be. It'll also line up then with UW Platteville, who is engaging in strategic plan time now, and that we come back then with a plan that we have time to vet out through the end of this year, early next year, to put in place for a two thousand and twenty-five, for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-seven strategic plan. Madam President.
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. This has to do with library transfer. Last time I made the comment that the developer was from Saint Cloud, and I was told, no, the developer no longer is from Saint Cloud, it's from a different location. So is there anything new that can be said about library transfer as far as to the city of Platteville?
Not at this time, working on the preliminaries to begin discussions on what and when that's going to look like.
So there's no, no plan as far as how the library is going to be transferred to the city of Platteville after so many years?
That's the discussion.
Do you know if there's a plan?
That is our hopes, is to begin formulating what that plan is going to look like, to essentially kind of plan the plan, if you will. I plan on meeting with the library director. Attorney Cole will be probably involved in those preliminary conversations to understand our position before we engage with the current owner.
So I have, for example, a question, how are we going to separate the library from the hotel? As far as some of the facilities are connected together, are they not?
Yes, it's my understanding that there are different utilities that we have in place. Obviously, we're sharing brick and mortar walls together. There's all different things that we're going to have to kind of work through. So in transition, and it's going to, the details have to be sorted and sifted on how that relationship's going to work going into the future.
And, and I said last time that, I remember that there was a gentleman named Rosazet up here talking about whether or not we would get it, get the library in the future. So I guess I'm really looking forward to having something more definite concrete as far as transfer the library. Thank you.
Okay, so the city manager has make a, made a recommendation that the council establish two thousand and twenty-four as a reset year, kind of finish up our twenty-one, twenty-three strategic plan, and then use twenty-four to begin our twenty-five to twenty-seven strategic plan. So do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to designate two thousand and twenty-four as a strategic reset year and to develop a subsequent strategy plan for two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Lynn to adopt the city manager's recommendation relative to a reset year and strategic planning for twenty-five, twenty-seven. Candace will vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that ends the action items on our agenda tonight. The next items are all for information and discussion. The first, an ordinance to amend chapter forty-five point one-four relative to city cemeteries. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Forty-five point one-four. Currently, subparagraph A says that fees and charges are payable at the city treasurer's office within five days after a burial. Most communities and other places require fees and charges be paid upfront, basically at the time of the service, not after the service is rendered. We have had a, a local funeral home that has been a habitual late payer of fees. One update that I do need to bring to your attention is that this morning Melby Funeral Home made a payment that brings his current balance to zero. He is, he is paid up with the late charges that are accrued since the time that we put the fees on the tax bill in two thousand and twenty-one. The tax bills still have not been paid to the county. So as I said, traditionally, other funeral homes pay in advance. We're recommending that the municipal code be changed to reflect that practice, and we suggest making this effective September first. And since they have already paid up, we can, we don't need to discuss a payment plan or anything like that. So city staff is recommending that, that we make that change to forty-five point fourteen subsection A.
Okay, questions?
I have one question. And my recollection is I, I went and I bought lots from the person. I think it was Paul Button, if I have the right name, but now it would be somebody else. So people can buy from the city?
Correct.
Or they can, like Melby can go to the city directly and buy? Is that how it's set up?
That's correct, yes. Individuals may, may approach the city to make purchases of lots individually, or they may work through a funeral home or other, other arrangement like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this would make collection of fees payable at the time of service rather than after the time of service. So if you have any questions, Todd?
Just have a question, what's the typical cost of a lot or?
The lots are in our schedule.
Yeah. I, I would have to look it up. It's, it's in our fee schedule that's on the website.
Ballpark.
I can't recall right now. It's probably in the fee schedule, one later in the, later in the. Later in the uh.
I guess I'm just wondering, what does twenty-two thousand dollars represent? The the non-payment of a couple of of couple of lots or is this?
Um.
Thirty or is this, you know what I mean?
We're talking everything from September of twenty twenty-two to the present. All all of the services that that he had performed for almost a full year.
Relatively cheap then.
Well, oh, um, yeah.
There's one graveside that says.
Eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars on the last page.
Yes, eight hundred and fifty dollars and then.
Four feet by ten feet.
Yes. And then there's.
If you have a bumper or not?
Then there's uh, uh, the actual cost for doing the burials uh, also. Uh, in the fee schedule as well. And that depends on whether it's weekend or weekday. It depends on whether it's winter or or not. Um, you know, because of the difficulties in doing burials in the winter, things like that.
I just take a look at that business and I see that there's a there's a lot going on with the funeral home business in regards to, it seems to be constant. And I imagine for them to, you know, always get in here within a few days and get something taken care of, it's probably asking a lot. You know, but I I understand that a year is a long time, too. I get that.
Al- although Todd, I would assume that we take uh, payment online. So. Yeah, it's pretty easy now. You don't have to come in with a check.
A- as I said, um, other other funeral homes from uh, the surrounding communities when they're when they're doing a burial here. Uh, they've, it's standard practice for them to either um. Do it upfront or that the day of the burial to basically hand a check in at the time.
Sure.
Okay, uh, next item on.
Thank you.
Our uh, information and discussion is contract seven dash twenty-three street maintenance.
Yes, this is our uh, thin overlay contract for the year. Um, one bid through Iverson Construction. Um, we have the proposed streets listed and on a map. Um, and so the uh, uh, cost would be a little bit under our budget uh, of a hundred and ten thousand. Uh, the uh, bid amount is slightly over a hundred and four thousand.
Questions on this? Other than I uh, Howard, why is Dewey Street, Seventh and Lancaster, Dewey? From Street Dewey, Seventh to Lancaster, why is that in yellow?
Um, that was actually added um, because because the bids came in better than I expected.
I just looked at a a couple of streets, Howard, in in my district. You know, we have Soden Street and we have Case Street. That are in, you know, severe disrepair. No way to get them added to this list or is it not even worthwhile until those streets are dug up and redone?
Um. We are working on our uh, proposed CIP for twenty twenty-four and Soden is one of the streets that I have. Recommended for twenty twenty-four. Um, I will be looking at Case Street as as. As a future one as well. Um, but. Um, it would. It would put us over budget if we did Case Street this year.
I see we're gonna repaint it. That's why I asked, or it's on the list to be painted to in the next items we're talking about, so.
Oh, well, I mean, that that's a, that's just the uh, crosswalk.
Oh, okay. Forgive me then. Thank you.
It's okay.
Okay, if anybody has any other questions about the thin overlay?
I have a comment.
Okay.
My recollection is that um, shared revenue was cut. Number of years ago, and so we decided to do the wheel tax and the wheel tax came out to be. About a hundred thousand dollars, which is what they generally cut us. The state did for our shared revenue, so. We're just playing here a catch-up game, which is not giving us enough money to do our streets. So this is a catch-up.
Okay, uh, let's move on to the next item, the award of contract eight dash twenty-three highway painting.
Yes. This is a annual painting of uh, highways, uh, center lines and other pavement markings. Um, our our plan here is to repaint Water Street. From Madison to Northside Drive and and include the roundabout. Uh, just so that you understand, Northside Drive is the dividing line between the city and state jurisdiction. For maintenance and all, so we're. Ending ours. Uh, we had one alternate bid that would paint crosswalks across the side streets. Uh, along uh, Water Street. They currently do not have them, but uh. We're recommending that we do those. Uh, that would be. Case Pit, Fairfield, Northside Drive. I left out Soden because we're looking at reconstructing that street next year. Um, we bid, we received a bid from Century Fence of Puywalki. Uh, they've done this for us. A number of years in the past. Um. The budget, including the alternate, is thirty thousand, five dollars and forty cents out of a budget of thirty thousand. I'm I'm hoping we can afford the five dollars and forty cents and find it somewhere and and do all of the uh, all of this painting.
Okay, any questions on the painted str- uh?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ken.
My question is, uh, I see a lot of streets that. The markings, the white markings, for example, are yellow, are gone. They're they're very poor, so. Are these streets, all these streets gonna be painted? We, so we're gonna leave some streets unpainted?
Um. This is another uh, amount of. That we do as a level of effort. And so. If the budget is increased, we will be able to do more uh, center line painting.
No, some of the streets will not be done. You just have to guess where to stop and so forth.
Essentially, yes. If you have a stop, if you have a stop sign, then you're supposed to stop at the stop sign.
No, it's. It's a poor, sad situation. Thank you.
Howard, I'll take care of the five dollars and forty cents if you don't come up with.
I was gonna do that.
Okay. Thanks.
There might be a fight over that, so make sure that the police are in in the council chambers, Andrea, next way.
Can I just make a, say something to you, Howard, about the um, what we were just talking about? Or I forget.
Painting?
The painting, yeah, before we go off.
Okay.
Um, so I'm, I would love to believe that there is a um, priority level to where you're painting, right? So even if we don't, where the streets that Ken is talking about don't get painting painted. Like, was there a list of streets that had to get painted? And then maybe what he's thinking, I just don't want it to seem like it's not we, that the city just doesn't care if they get painted.
We do, we paint the ones that are. The high-traffic streets and and everything as as best we can. This paint is generally supposed to last five to seven years. And it was last painted when it was constructed in twenty twelve. So it's been eleven years since since this was painted with paint that normally lasts five to seven years.
And and there's always more to paint, so I'm sure.
And there's.
They try to paint crosswalks by schools or school routes.
Yes.
Those kinds of.
I mean, the the city crews do a lot of of their of their own painting, you know, as uh, President Dawes said. Uh, in and around the school, there's school areas and things like that. We're talking here mainly the uh. The larger, longer highway type streets.
So so this would be some truck coming along and painting or.
Yes.
Like you see painting ahead. This isn't somebody, and I've seen cross crosswalks. Uh, blocked off particularly at the university lately. They the university has been painting the crosswalks and you'll go through. A couple of those roads and you'll see they've got half the street blocked off and then the next day they have the other half blocked off as they're. Painting and I think they're doing that with some kind of, I don't think they're using a paintbrush.
No, it's not a paintbrush or a roller. There's um, our crews have a riding. Riding uh, sprayer that that they use, but it's not the high-tech, high-speed. Uh. Truck that you were thinking of.
Well, how much of the streets does the city crew paint?
I'm not sure that I can answer a a question on that. I mean. A- as President Dawes said, we do, we do crosswalks, um, and we do uh. Yellow curb painting and things like that. In and around the university area on city streets, in and around school. Uh, school crossings and things like that, uh, in and around fire hydrants and and other places in the city. Where that, what we do is generally a twelve to eighteen month. Paint. We gotta go back pretty much every year and repaint because it's a water-based paint that that wears off. Um, but the this other painting is an epoxy base that lasts a lot longer. And we save that for those high-traffic, long stretches. Like Water Street or or Business One Fifty-One or or things like that.
So how many hours do you think per year the city crews are painting? If you look at the past four years, five years, how many hours do they paint per year?
Um, there's usually a crew of two and it ends up. That on and off, depending on what other tasks there are, like storm damage or things like that. They'll end up spending a month and a half to two months doing doing the painting.
So between that and and parking areas and the downtown, you do quite a bit. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Seems to be, you know, every summer, substantial amount.
Okay, uh, that's highway painting. Uh, let's move on to the fourth and last item for information discussion. That's resolution twenty twenty-four. Uh, fee schedule. Uh, Candace?
Yes, so annually, uh, staff will review the fee. That are charged it charged by the city of Platteville to uh, the residents for various items such as license, permits, inspections, programming, et cetera. Um, and there's just a few minor changes this year uh, to the, and I apologize, my page numbers are a bit off on my. Staff report. Um, within the document itself, the fee schedule itself, they are correct. So I will correct these as I'm speaking about them. Um, but the administration appears on pages one through three. The correction is actually on page two. Of the administration um, section and that is just to the public records section. There was an elimination of a fee that we no longer use, so that's deleted off. And then there was some language. That I updated to include um, for just fulfilling records and requests that are made by uh, people in the public. The next item was is actually on page six. Um, this is, excuse me, EMS and fire. Um, EMS slash ambulance has been eliminated completely. Um, we are past the retention period on these records, so we no longer have them. Um, and then the park and recreation actually appears on pages ten to twelve. And the correction, or excuse me, the updated information is actually on page twelve. And there's a um, increase to tier number three. To sixty dollars for residents and eighty dollars for non-residents.
Tier three is, Bob?
Yeah. Flag football, PYDS, uniform costs have gone up, so. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the uh, changes to the fee schedule? These would be, uh, it's important that we adopt these early on in the budget process, so as our. Uh, department chairs and do their budget planning, uh, which they're involved in right now. They are uh, aware of if there needs to be a a change. So I'm assuming these came from. Any other questions on the fee schedule? Well, folks, that ends the public portion of our agenda tonight. We do have a closed session scheduled for Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, Karen Wong, Karen Lee. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is about the fire facility site. Uh, we will return to open session after closed session. And uh, we are listing that there may be possible action. Uh, we obviously won't know that until after we have a discussion. So I need a motion to go to closed session.
I move to go to closed session.
Back to me.
Okay, uh, Candace will vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.